Well, you stayed with me. Exactly.
We have nine o'clock, guys.
Yes, we do.
Let's call the meeting order. Stand for the pledge.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbrook.
Present.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbecker. Benny David.
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
See Randy here. We might want to consider pulling item seven K, the portment report. And before it needs to be adopted in October, but you've got another meeting yet before time runs out. So the report itself is pretty lengthy, and I think the board would do well to see it before you're asked to actually approve it.
Perfect. So we will pull item seven K. We'll put that on. Are you going to put that in the committee of the whole?
Yes, might as well. Yeah.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections?
Or should you approve with the amendment wrapping item seven K?
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook. Do we have support? I'll support it. To approve the agenda with the stated changes, all in favor, say yes.
Yes, sir.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, review of minutes. We've got the September 29th, 2021 special meeting minutes.
I reviewed those minutes and I'll make a motion that we accept them as presented.
Support?
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the September 29th, 2021 special meeting minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three B, September 29th, 2021 closed session minutes.
I read those. Go ahead.
I reviewed those minutes. Motion to accept and let's present.
We have a motion from Commissioner Vaughn with support from Commissioner Scott to approve the September 29th, 2021 closed session meeting minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four. I'm going to read this one time per meeting. Item four is a public comment on agenda item manners. This is the first two opportunities for public comment. On December 10th, 2020, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 2077 to adopt rules of procedure that include a structure for public comment. This public comment period is limited to topics that appear on the meeting agenda. A second public comment period appears later in the agenda, at which time public statements will be accepted on any manner or issue that is relevant and germane to county government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject manners. However, failure to follow the direction of the chairperson result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or derides a speaker. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we thank you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Is there any public comment, and this is on agenda items, in the room? Any public comment? Any public comment on the phone? I'm sorry. Yes. Are you? Okay, then there's a second public comment. We'll save for that. Okay? No public comment. We'll go on to item five, correspondence. We received correspondence from Grasset County related to support for House Bill 5026 here on county related to vaccine mandate opposition, Coquasca County related to mandatory vaccination and masking opposition. Geez, Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs related to the 15th biannual state survey and report in Santa Clara County related to the support of medical autonomy. Those have been received and filed. Item six, action on consent calendar. I would like to take these individually. So we, pardon me?
Well, Mr. Booth is here. Now are we putting that section back in now?
No, no, we're going to put that in committee of the whole because as Tim said, he felt like we needed to review it, and there's no urgency to it. We have time. Are you okay with that, Randy? Perfect.
He could be excused if he wants to go.
I think that's up to him. But yeah, we did remove it, Randy.
Okay.
So we're Yep. Perfect. Thank you, sir. Item seven A, resolution to appoint members to the Board of Canvassers. This resolution is sponsored by the county clerk. Within 10 days after convening for their annual meeting, the Board of Commissioners must elect by ballot one nominee to each person to each open position on the Board of County Canvassers. It is a duty of the Board of County Canvassers to conduct all recounts of elections in cities, townships, villages, school districts, metropolitan districts, or any other districts. Members of the Board of County Canvassers are appointed for terms of four years beginning on November 1st following their appointment. Approval of the resolution will result in appointment of Christine Detroyer and Maria Perannon to Oglema County, the Board of County Canvassers for terms expiring on October 31st, 2025. Did she touch base with you after that last meeting?
I have, I have to, I have to get them to
So she has committed? Okay.
Make a motion with this resolution.
I'll support that. We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support to approve the resolution to appoint members to the Board of County Canvassers, Christine Detroyer and Maria Perannon. Any discussion on that? No discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Resolution carries. Item seven B, resolution to approve a lease agreement. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. On September 29th, 2017, the Oglema County Board of Commissioners entered into a lease agreement with We C Showroom Auto Detailing LLC for the use of lot four of block one of the plat of RH Weidman and Company's addition to the village, now city of West Branch. This resolution directs the county administrator and county attorney to draft a new lease agreement that one continues terms and conditions of the expired agreement, two addresses fair value consideration, three sets forth procedures to address taxation applied to the leased property, and four requires liability insurance at levels adequate to protect the county from harm.
We make a motion without the resolution is presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the resolution to approve a lease agreement. Is there any discussion?
This is the paved lot, correct?
Yes.
Yes, alright.
Um, I had some, I had a question on it. Like, I didn't actually see. So we're approving a lease agreement, but I don't see the lease agreement. Like
You're directing myself and the attorney to draw that up and make sure these points are included in the and also in the resolution. You'll know the statement that says the other terms and conditions continue to apply. So there are maintenance requirements, for instance, that are in there, but these are the issues that we specifically identified that were absent from the current lease that in compliance with the Supreme Court decisions actually need to be included. And then that final one just addresses the risk, liability risk the county still has, and to make sure that we're covered as an additional insured on the OSCE's insurance policy.
Can we review this annually as we have been, just in case anything changes with parking or with
We can, and in the resolution, you'll know it is for a one-year term that would expire September 30th of '22. So you'll see this continually every year.
Okay.
So if there are changes, we can incorporate them at that time.
Any further discussion? And this is just for lease, not for sale?
Right.
Roll call vote.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Item seven C, resolution to approve a lease agreement with purchase option. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. The resolution directs the county administrator and county attorney to develop a lease for the use of lot nine of block one of the plat of RH Weidman and Company's addition to the village, now city of West Branch. Terms and conditions of the agenda item seven B apply with the added option of leasing to purchase the property.
Make a motion of the, without the resolution is presented.
Do we have support? Any support on that? So we have no support.
Motion dies.
The motion dies. Let's put that on for the next committee of the whole, so we can discuss that. Did you want to support it?
No, I didn't want to support it, but
Item seventy, resolution to accept a quote for web-based time and attendance system. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator, information systems director, and the chief deputy county clerk. The resolution sponsors reviewed the Nova time and determined that the software package is sufficient to meet the needs of the Oglema County departments and will fully automate the payroll system. The system integrates with the SNA financial software and currently in use, will greatly improve efficacy and substantially reduce changes of error in processing biweekly payroll. The total the total first year cost of the software package is $16,071 and a total cost not to exceed $8,836 for years two through five. Funding for this purchase shall be charged to the general fund general appropriations contingency line item leaving a line item balance of approximately $58,929.
I'll make a motion, Louis. Accept this resolution, support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve resolution to accept a quote for web-based time and attendance system discussion. This is going to be for all county employees, correct?
Right, so we still have some employees that will be required to punch in on a time clock, literally time clock. And in one case, I did transit authority just for efficiency and ease of use. It will actually authenticate our employee with a fingerprint, so they will put that on the screen. It will check them in. Other employees who are exempt from overtime rules, so that will be myself, for instance, anybody who's on salary, will be able to actually log in online or on our phones and just simply check in the days that we're here, record vacation, sick, whatever, and have that automatically sent to the VSA system. There's also some advantages to the software where we have, for instance, example was given where we have one of our clerks that may leave the office about 15 minutes early because they have to walk paperwork over to the sheriff's office and then leave from there. We can actually set up radius around our buildings where employees can check in and out on their phones, which allows for tremendous accountability for where our employees are when they're checking in. And it also says the software is not going to allow you to just check in from home and say you're at work. And that's not going to happen. So a lot of safeguards built into it, but more importantly, this is going to save a lot of time in processing a payroll because the keystrokes are entered one time, not two and three times where there's chance of error, but one time, and it automatically integrates with the SNA to produce the payroll. So Tracy's job becomes much more efficient. She gets time to do other things rather than just keying in data. So this is going to be a time saver and it's on efficiency, but perhaps even more importantly, eliminating chance of error on the payroll.
And liability?
And liability.
Tracking. I mean, there's, we could go on and on and on.
Lots of, lots of things, and we'll have excellent trend data to work with as well as this, you know, as the weeks go by. So we'll be able to, you know, look at, you know, when our vacation is generally taken and at what lengths and scheduling for the sheriff's office. So and for the corrections, it's going to be hopefully much easier for everybody.
Any further discussion?
The department heads will still sign off.
Yes, and we have the ability to have numerous sign offs if that's necessary. We do have, for instance, our security personnel in the hallway here. Some of them are also operatives bailiffs. And so when they turn in their time sheets, we can have, you know, two and three people sign off on them, depending on who is the supervisor for that particular function. And then ultimately, it all ends up again at payroll and everything gets processed without error.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Yes. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven E, resolution to support amendments to the Open Meetings Act. This resolution is presented as a result discussion at the October 6th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting. A series of executive orders and statutory amendments issued in 2020 authorized remote participation in public meetings and specifically allowed public bodies to hold meetings electronically, either by telephone or video conferencing. Those special, those special authorizations are set to expire on December 31st, 2021, and will eliminate a public's body flexibility to allow one or two members to attend remotely. This, the resolution requests that all counties with a population of 75,000 or fewer be allowed to permanently continue current practice.
I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution, support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the resolution to support amendments to the Open Meetings Act. I was, I wanted to ask you on the wording on this, on the actual resolution, because it says, whereas this substantial change eliminates a public's body's previous flexibility to allow one or two members to attend remotely. But then down here, and there allows only members absent due to military duty to participate in meetings electronically. I was, I was confused by the wording of this.
That's the current law.
Once we fall back after January 1st of '22, then the only exception is if you're on active duty.
So this isn't the resolution that we're passing, this one? Correct? That's why I was
This is the resolution that's proposed.
Yeah, that's, that's not right.
It states the board requests that all counties with a population of 75,000 or fewer be exempt from the portion of the Open Meetings Act that allows only members absent due to military duty to participate in meetings electronically. So there's a couple of thoughts that are in play, obviously the population. But that statement is asking these counties, 75,000 or fewer, to be exempt from requirement that allows only members absent due to military duty to participate in meetings. In other words, to allow members who are absent for reasons other than military duty can participate. So maybe a little clumsy on the wording. But tempting here just simply to point out, that's what the requirement is, military duty only exemption. We would like counties to be able, at least the 75,000 or fewer counties, to allow commissioners to participate regardless of the military duty requirement. So whatever the requirements are currently under the exceptions that are due to expire on December 31st, and there are a number of things in there that the commissioner participating has to identify that they are participating electronically, where they are, why they can't be at the meeting, and so on. Those rules, this resolution would like to see continued for counties of 75,000 or fewer.
So was the verbiage. It was that, or fear of be exact. Still, it threw me.
But we'd like to throw you now on that, for sure.
Just make sure I read it right. Apparently I skipped the word. Um, any further discussion?
No call.
Is there any further discussion? Doesn't mean that this is going to go into effect. It means that we're requesting that this continue. I, I, I've stated my opinion, I think, twice on this now, so Correct. So can we get a roll call vote?
Jenny David.
No.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven F, resolution to approve authorized signatures for M.DOT master agreement. This resolution is sponsored by the Transit Director. The Michigan Department of Transportation requires approval of a resolution to authorize a chairperson and vice chairperson of the Board of Commissioners to enter into it in executive. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, all such project authorizations with the Michigan Department of Transportation for passenger transportation-related services. This required requirement is consistent with existing Oglema County policy. We discussed that at the committee of the whole.
Motion to accept this proposal.
We have a motion from Commissioner Vaughn with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the resolution to approve authorized signatures for M.DOT master agreement. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Resolution carries. Item seven G, resolution to approve M.DOT master agreement for public transportation projects. This resolution is sponsored by the Transit Director to approve master agreement number 2022-0117 as submitted by M.DOT. The proposed agreement will make federal and or state grant funds available to Oglema County for the cost of eligible projects to promote or benefit public transportation. This, the resolution also authorizes the board of chairperson to sign any other agreements which are issued under master agreement number 2022-0117.
Make a motion to accept the resolution is presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott, or Serbrook. Do we have support?
I'll support.
With the support from Commissioner Scott. Is there any discussion on this? Roll call vote.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Item seven H, resolution to approve agreement for extension services. This resolution is sponsored by the MSU Extension Regional Director to approve the annual agreement for extension services for fiscal year 2022 at a cost not to exceed $77,913. Funding for the agreement is included in the approval MSU extension budget as generated through a special voted millage. We have a motion
I'd make a motion that we accept the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the resolution to approve agreement for extension services. Discussion. Anything you want to add, Tim?
Now, this is the standard contract that we approve annually. It does reflect a 2% increase over last year, which is certainly reasonable.
And you told us that, committee of the whole?
So.
Huh?
Yeah, I think so.
You did.
Yes, you did.
Any further discussion?
And the funding, the standing fund balance and everything will total up enough money to cover.
Yeah, we've got to cover. I've got to pick a date that Julie has kindly sent me a number of those already, and we're going to sit down and we'll bring you likely at the committee of the whole meeting an amended budget to reflect the use of the fund balance. But all of the services and programs that we had projected for the budget certainly will continue. It's, just got to shuffle the numbers around to reflect the use of the fund balance.
There's enough money to cover.
Yes, that's the question.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Item seven I, resolution to approve job description for sheriff's office secretary and corrections secretary. This resolution is sponsored by the sheriff. Job description can help identify particular skills or abilities that are necessary for a position or the environmental pressure that apply to the position. A well-written job description establishes a solid set of expectations for employers to communicate to employees by highlighting key duties and responsibilities. New job descriptions for the sheriff's office secretary and corrections secretary are necessary because no job description currently exists.
Make a motion that we accept the resolution is presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve job description for sheriff's office secretary and corrections secretary. I did look those over, and that was close to two pages.
Yeah, that one I think you ran over a little bit.
It did. I mean, is it pretty close to what they're currently doing?
I believe it is, and I do like the catch-all toward the bottom, and put this in all the job descriptions and other duties as maybe assigned. So that if we did miss something, there's opportunity to overcome that.
Okay. And they both had an opportunity to look at this, and do you know?
They had input.
Okay, so that means they've spent enough. Okay. Any further discussion?
We get an ad from the sheriff.
We did.
Is there any further discussion?
Alright.
With the commissioners right now?
Oh.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Sheriff Brandon, Sheriff? Okay. Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution item seven J, resolution to decline community corrections grant. This resolution is sponsored by the Airenet Oglema County Community Corrections Advisory Board. The board has determined that funding from the state of Michigan Office of Community Alternatives for fiscal year 2022 is insufficient to provide required services. In the event that anticipated outside funding is not received or the county is not notified that it will not be received, the annual appropriations resolution requires that associated programs shall be considered not funded and remove them from the approved budget. The board suggested that all member counties decline state funding for fiscal year 2022 because the amount offered is insufficient to provide needed services.
I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution that's presented. Support?
We have a motion from Commissioner Vaughn with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve Resolution seven J to decline community corrections grant. Any discussion? Commissioner Vaughn, do you have anything to add to that?
Say, we, you know, it was discussed. I wasn't at the meeting, but from what I've been told that on, you know, the, the funding's not adequate to continue the service. Can be picked up at a later date. Hopefully, things change. We'll go from there.
They cut the funding basically in half, didn't they, Ron?
Yeah, it was
Substantial.
Yeah, it was a substantial cut. And it's, it's a two-county, it's Airenet County, it's Airenet County and Oglema County, a joint effort, so.
Now, did Airenet County already approve this to, to decline this money?
I haven't heard anything.
But they're planning on it.
The consensus was, yeah, that's
We've already had the vast majority of the players resigned.
Resigned.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Claims. It's in the bills, $395,355.97. I had a question on that. Who reviewed them?
I did.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to?
We had a draw on the construction project across three, which was substantial.
Is that under the American Rescue Planets? Is that the 94,000? Okay, I was going to ask on that.
Yes, it is. And I believe the automobile, the two automobiles for the sheriff's department is on this plane. So that was significant. Housing had some bigger, bigger bills. Of course, that's all encapsulated in housing, but adds to the total.
So that was a road patrol for $100,834.39 was the vehicle?
We had a insurance, $15,000 insurance payment. So there was a few things that added to a larger than average total.
Who else reviewed them?
It's Newbecker's turn.
Yeah, Brad didn't know that he's got to it yet.
Okay.
Right?
No.
No. But I think Ron, Ron, you let him know, right?
I did. Yeah, I did. A couple of weeks ago, I told him it was
Yeah, and then there was $16 to the academy for the deputies, deputy academy that hit this, this claim period too.
Where'd that come out of? Is that underneath the road patrol?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that was the bigger, bigger things, all the, the 8,500 from transit that we approved the tire bid.
Yep.
You know, it was just a lot of regular bills that we would pay, but they all hit the same time, total $350,000.
For money.
Yeah.
Questions? I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Oh, second.
Thanks for the input, Commissioner Scott. We have a motion with support to pay the bills of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mark Sirbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Danny David.
Yes.
Yes.
Item eight, unfinished business. I believe there isn't any. Item nine, administrator's report.
Three items for you this morning, first, next Thursday, on the twenty-first. We'll send a notice to all employees today, we will be doing our annual flu shot clinic, rate likely in this room or maybe these rooms here. That's something we do annually, it draws about twenty, twenty-five employees, I think great worthwhile effort. I had a call yesterday from the Drain Commissioner, Mike Domain Show. Looks like right now that new Rifle River Drain hearing will be on December ninth. More details to follow, such as the time and location. I'll make sure I get with Tom and make sure that gets on our webpage. And then quickly an update on our Mesa Enrollment Project. This is the new health insurance that'll be effective on November first. We had meetings with employees this past Monday, they were scheduled, actually the Mesa rep was here all day. We had two larger group meetings that were very successful. And just a quick statistic, we'll see if this holds, but as of yesterday, about midday, about ninety percent of our enrollees were opting for the HSA plan, ABC one plan, which is, personally, I think that's probably the, the better of the two, depending on your personal situation. But that's also the plan that while improving the product that the employee receives in terms of coverage, it's actually far more economical for us. The most economical plan that can be chosen, so very glad to hear that, that statistic. So far, that's going very smoothly, I hesitate to say that, because there's still a couple of weeks here. But it, it does look like things happen without many bumps, so. It's all good.
Good. Have you heard? Good. Elected officials in department head reports. Clerk.
Um, I don't really have an update, everything's going good.
Treasurer.
Karen Glowski, Oglema County Treasurer, we're currently working on dog license renewal mailing, that's the care, it'll be out to our residents the first week of November. And our second tax sale, which is the best and final offer on the final properties, staying held tomorrow morning.
Perfect. Sheriff.
Well, we got some good things happening. To contract. Solving that problem. Recently, we just hired two, we hired one last Monday. And then we hired another one Wednesday. One we hired on Wednesday is currently working night patrol for the tribe up there in Traverse City area. He's got fifteen months' experience, so that should be an easy, quick transformation for us to start November first. So that, that is a big help for us, so we've got two coming. Our two in Academy is this the ninth week, so it's getting a little easier for them. They're in precision driving right now and they are shooting, qualifying, so that's kind of the fun thing you want to look forward to, so they're doing real well. So we got eight more weeks, we'll get them back. I'm happy to say also that our detective is going to put on a uniform. He's going to go to twelve-hour shifts, he's going to help train these people. We got more that need to train real quickly. He's going to step up, help our department out, our office out. And also Lieutenant Councilman is going to go to twelve-hour shifts. He is also going to step up, we're going to, we're going to get these guys trained so we can hurry up and fast forward our night shift. Working hard at it. Things are really looking good now, things are turning. Really happy, happy for that. Our vehicles, our night patrol vehicles are being equipped right now, so they're, they should be up to running probably, I would say within the week. Be ready to go. And yesterday, we just had one more inquiry on hospital hire, so we're going to see what happens there. It's refreshing, so we're going to see, we're trying to wait for that. Our precision driving training, that's finished, we completed that yesterday. All our reps went through that, everybody passed, so all that information will, will be sent over there to our insurance carrier. So we have doctorization that qualified drivers. That's all I have right now.
How many more open positions are there?
We'll have two after, after this one.
Okay, so only two more.
We're getting there. Very nice board.
So this guy transitions right to night shift.
Oh, he loves, he loves night shift.
Go right first November, you'll go right tonight.
Well, we, we got to train him, well, we got to train him our way.
I don't want him getting used to daytime.
No, no.
I don't want him to think that he's got a chance.
He was very, he was very, he loves nights, he hates days, he don't like mornings, and he will bump people to go to night, so that's what we want to hear.
You want at least two of those.
No, we'll, we'll be good.
How, how long do you, how long do you think the lieutenant spends, I go half to twelve hours? Three months?
Probably next, next month they're going to start.
No, I mean, how long will they have to do that?
Um, probably our.
I mean, it's, it is a temporary assignment.
Yeah, yeah, it's a temporary, it's three months, you know, we're training, training. Yeah, I, I've got to have my detective back into his office, you know.
Well, yeah.
Big things happening.
Well, I saw the paper and he looks like he's been busy, so I don't want him to get off of that.
I know, he's, he's really looking forward to the, to a little bit of a change.
Really?
Yeah, he's gonna.
Oh. Can we go to white cards? Can we go to white cards?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. MSU, did you have anything to add? Did you want to?
Yeah, I know.
Elaine was, Elaine was planning on speaking during public comment.
Oh.
But.
No, that was the time.
Your department? I'm asking, I'm asking for MSU department.
Jump right up there, young lady.
I don't have anything to add. We don't have anything new, but Elaine, oh, sorry. Elaine Palm is our community nutrition instructor and the grant year for all of our nutrition programs runs October through September. So this is sort of the end of her year, so if she would like to talk about her programs.
And Julia was at the, she was at the fair, fair board meeting and she introduced the new director.
Well, yeah.
That was, that was nice.
Yes. Um, Anya and I attended the fair board meeting most recently and introduced ourselves and we'll look for other ways to engage with the fair.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay.
Thanks, Julie, happy new year, everyone. This is the, October one starts the new federal grant year for the work that I do. And what I do is reach people who are eligible for food assistance. So within MSU Extension, we work through the Michigan Department of Health and Food Services to get grant funding with United States Department of Agriculture to work with people who are eligible for food assistance to bring nutrition education throughout Michigan. And so I work in Oglema County and Roscommon County with that population. And one of the more exciting programs that I was a part of in the last year has been to amplify a partnership with Mid-Michigan Health. And through that partnership, they have kind of put some funds behind an incentive program for people to attend our nutrition education programs. And so we had four of these in the last few months where Mid-Michigan Health provides sixty dollars worth of vouchers for fruits and vegetables in local marketplaces. So that could be a farm, that could be grocery stores, where each time they attend a six-week series. So we have, we have a program for six weeks' time. Each of the, the six programs that they attend, each time they attend one of the six, they get ten dollars for a fruit and vegetable voucher. And so they can earn up to sixty dollars worth of fruits and vegetables to kind of boost their health and access to these foods. And so if they get perfect attendance, they also earn a crackpot. And that's been a wonderful partnership, I have two additional programs through that partnership this, this actual year. And so those programs are Cooking for One, done virtually, and Today's Mom, which targets pregnant mothers. And that'll be starting at the end of October and running through December first, also a virtual program. So through that partnership, we are not only reaching people in Oglema County and Roscommon Counties where I work, we are also reaching Aranac, Gladwin, Ascoda, and Iosco County residents. And that is the beauty of it being a virtual program at this time, is that we are reaching people wherever they are. And it's been great to get to know people through that extra incentive to attend class. So that's all I had to share today, and we really appreciate your support of programs like what I do and what my coworkers do throughout the state. Thank you.
Do you get referrals from like the HHS or you tell to those individuals to try and coax them?
Certainly, that is, that is one way of working throughout the community to make sure that we are working with partners to ensure that they have information about our programs. And MDHS is one of my partners and I work with youth in the foster care system. And so that is a program that's especially
Near and dear.
Near and dear to my heart, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I can see that she is not aware of the public comment time limit.
This is not public.
This is near my heart.
No, 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 that's what I mean, if she was going to wait for public comment, we wouldn't have heard half of it.
Thank you. Is there?
Always willing to listen and, you know, that was, that was my plan today, but.
Come for the department.
Happy to have the platform for you.
Anytime you guys want to get on the agenda.
Jeff.
I'll let you know.
Jeff, I see you're on the phone, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything at this time of, well, I shouldn't say that, we have Veteran of the Year coming up in November eleventh. One meeting, a little early for you. But Arley Morgan is our Veteran of the Year for this year and we'll be celebrating him on the eleventh at eleven o'clock at the VFW in M thirty and Lehman Road.
Who is that, who's the, I didn't catch the name.
Arley Morgan.
Oh, Harley?
Harley, with an A, A R L E Y, excuse me, A R L I E, Arley.
Oh.
He's a Vietnam, he's a Vietnam veteran.
Yes.
I think it was seventy-eight to sixty-eight to seventy-two, I may have the dates wrong, I don't have his paperwork right in front of me.
Perfect. Thank you. Brian Stein, I think I seen you on the call too, do you have anything, are you still there? No, I don't see him. Any other elected officials or department heads? Denise, are you, she was on there too. Denise, did you have anything? Nope. Okay. Manish from the floor. I don't think we have any. Uh, no motions for adoption, committee reports, Commissioner Man.
I attended Rose Township. Most of that was on recycling and the dump, how much it's costing the township to run their dump. So they're trying to figure that out. Parks Rec, we met, we had a discussion about the D refuge and the campground. I think we'd like to maybe add, I think Craig, Committee of the Hall, as far as talking about our sewer updates and stuff at the park. That, and then last night I met with nine-one-one. They're looking at possibly hiring a assistant director at nine-one-one. Um, the director is just totally overloaded right now. Um, they did hire two more dispatchers, but they're still a little shorthanded along with, what I'm hearing, all the counties are, are pretty shorthanded right now. So, so I've got.
Thank you. Commissioner Sirbrook.
I attended West Branch Township last night. The treasurer reported that just off the top of her head, property tax collections were between like eighty and ninety percent this time limit. Pretty happy with that, she said they're still trickling in the course. Attended West Branch Council Meeting last Monday. Unfortunately, I was in the hospital here earlier this weekend, was on to attend the commission agent meeting Tuesday morning, so that's that one. All I had.
Commissioner Scott.
I visited all four.
Negotiations. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was going to touch on that. I, I know you would, but I just.
I visited all my four townships this week. There was two different developers, one in Horton and one in Oglema Township that visited their meetings with plant development. Of course, in Oglema Township, the fire store is going to break guns speed. Edwards is looking at a way to sell cemetery lots that have not been used for decades even. They, they have quite a few empty spots and they're waiting for their attorney's opinion on how that can happen. Boston Township's got more discussion about the gypsy moss spring for next year. Or the redistricts, redistricting for commissioners was a common topic across all townships. I explained to them what we did with the budget and what we did with the villages, how the, each of those villages that we reduced had fund balances to make up for that. There was a couple of questions about that in a couple of meetings. Parks and Rec, the RV closes, the RV park will close at the end of this month. There is a Halloween weekend with the fence for kids and stuff this weekend going on, we had a lot of discussion about our infrastructure projects, our nature park, we had, we had some fence replacement bids we put off till next, next month. And we just had a lot of discussion about that. We had a, a group of about a hundred and fifty veterans that were riding RVs, that it's a color tour and they, they came to the park last year. They came again this year and they made it like a, a two-time visit, they made a big tour and then came back again. And they're pretty generous with their, with their donations, so it's great to see, they called ahead of time, they used the hall as kind of a, just a stopping off point. The planning commission, we, we first of all approved of public comment rules that mirror the counties ones. We had a pretty heated public hearing a couple of months ago, so we went ahead, approved of some rules about public comment. And I just showed them what we use here in our, and we adopted it through the, for the planning commission. We did approve in our E Park and Rose Township with restrictions and some changes to the original plan. They'll be in three phases, we approved the first phase and and negotiations, well, we're waiting a ratification vote, but we have four out of five contracts settled. So. That's been a lot of time. We keep talking five contracts. I'm talking.
Was that park up in Rose Township, is that the one, uh, that you had told us about? That was put on hold because of, uh, how heated the discussion got? Is this, is this the same park?
Well, it didn't really get on hold. Uh, it was a public hearing, so we didn't make a decision at that. We could have made a decision after the public hearing. We didn't. Uh, we wanted the park, the, the owners of the property to come back with some, uh, what am I trying to say? Yeah, modifications, changes that they would, they would agree to.
Up north?
Yes, it's.
North of Rose City?
Yes.
Between Rose City and Lucton?
No, it's almost straight north of Rose City.
Okay.
Just a little bit east.
So this is a new RV park that's going in there?
Brand new, yeah. But it is, uh, on property that has a church camp. They have a hundred and eighty-five acres up there, but church camp is a small portion of it. But they wanna generate revenue by having an RV park that'll be isolated from the.
How big? How many sites?
All three phases, I think it's, uh, I think it's sixty-five sites, some cabins, and, uh, some permanent camping too.
Cause I've received a few phone calls.
But the first, uh, the first phase is only like, uh, half, half the site.
Was there many people?
In a dump station.
Sorry. Was there many people at that meeting when, when the decision was made?
Not at the decision making, but, uh, yeah, but they were allowed to speak. Uh, Chairman Lehman allowed them to, uh, speak before we, we made a decision. Uh, at the public hearing, there was a hundred and five signatures at the public hearing.
Opposing it?
Uh, not all opposing it, but a hundred and five were there to sign their name. Not all opposed it.
Oh, a hundred and five.
I would probably say the, yeah, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. But if you would have heard the reasoning and then, uh, there was, uh, I, I sheriff was asked about crime. Correct me if I'm wrong. Asked about crime in the RV parks in the county. And, uh, the way I heard it was very, very minimal.
Minimal, but I, I did say that if you have an RV park and you add an ATV to it, you're gonna have some trouble. You're gonna have, you're gonna have extra.
Yeah, I talked to Ryan Beeter here a couple of weeks back. They were having some issues with, uh, we talked about that, that campground. Pretty significant issues actually. But, uh, my other question was
It's changed.
The road commission. Um, have you been to there?
I have not.
Okay, because they were having some pretty significant issues as well. Um, with union issues. Okay.
Issues.
I didn't know if they had worked them out. I haven't heard from them in about two weeks.
I, I've talked to Van Cheltron some, uh, but I haven't been able to attend a meeting. Yesterday was one of their meetings there. I was a partner, right? So.
I attended the fair board meeting. Um, they were working on their budget. They're about fifty thousand dollars short. Um, going into their next year's budget, um, and that's related to, uh, unfortunately, the pandemic. Um, so they're gonna have to make some significant cuts. That was with everything pretty much remaining the same from this last year into next year. Um, they had a Halloween weekend that was full last weekend. They had a, I think, another Halloween weekend this, this past weekend, um. They are getting some rentals for weddings again, and so things are moving in the right direction. They're just still, uh, hurting. They are taking canned donations. They, they raised thirty thousand dollars for the playground. They plan on putting in a new, new playground right there by the campground. So I attended the Hardwood Lake Association, um, meeting that's once a year. Um, that was just this past week. Uh, that was pretty insightful. Um, they were not pleased with their weed control, unfortunately, this past year. Um, a new company, uh, they did a transition and some things have changed as far as copper sulfate and when you can use it and. Um, and it was a wet, uh, a biologist was there and, and explained some things. It was a very wet, uh, hot summer. So unfortunately, the, uh, weeds were, were pretty troublesome. Uh, but we did approve that budget going into next year. I attended Mills this past week. Um, ordinance talked about those houses that are going up for sale. You said tomorrow, correct? Um, uh, some ordinance issues, um, liquor license, they also approved, uh, are in the process of approving another, uh, liquor license for, uh, Dee's Pizza Pad. He was there. Um, they talked about the redistricting as, as well. Um, I gave them a little bit of insight on, uh, the commissioner duties. Um, they were pretty excited about that. So, uh, Richland Township attended that. Uh, campground is closing or closed. I think it closed the tenth. Uh, they had a Halloween weekend as well. They were full. Um, they're looking at some more, um, electric, electric sites. Um, I, I think they'll be primarily electric here, uh. So they're looking at, um, getting some more sites to hopefully they can get some more seasonals. Um, I attended Michigan Works here uh, last week. That's, that's their, their back at full capacity, doing quite well. People are starting to have to report. Um, they're holding some job fairs. Um, I think that's, I think that's it for me. Yes, that's it. Um, item fourteen, general public comment. Um, I read the rules previously. The only thing that does not apply is this is any subject matter that anybody would like to speak about. Um, gotta keep it to three minutes or fewer. So do we have any public comment in the room? Or did you?
I'll speak way faster than you. Um, I'm Mike.
Not always a good thing.
Might go within thirty-three access. Uh, I've been doing a lot of due diligence with a lot of townships. One person trying to get a, a lot of people. Past eight months, I've been working with a lot of different townships trying to figure out the answer. Um, talked with Connect Nation, uh, a couple times. Going over some things with them, funding, these different things that are coming down the pipe for them. A lot of the ARP funding as well, I've been trying to help the townships with. Um, not just broadband, I was trying to get people to understand there's things you can use it for. Uh, but if townships have been concerned about broadband in their area, we're there to help them. One of the things that our Connect Nation said at the last meeting was the, eventually things are gonna come no matter what. Ten, fifteen years from now, are, there's gonna be more broadband in the area. Uh, that's the way things are going with technology. The difference is, he said, we can either be the architects for how it's done and make sure the areas are taking care of how we want it to be done, or we can just let whoever kind of do it their way. And I thought that statement was extremely interesting. Me being a community-minded person, I'm more inclined to be the architect and help our communities the way we feel is necessary. So what I had done is go to the townships and say, how do you want it done? How would you guys like to see things taken care of? And how can I help accomplish that? Um, one of the things we've done in, uh, Skoda County is, um, any of the townships that are putting funding towards broadband, uh, we're in discussion now with the county to match funds, which helps them to at least get more bang for their buck for the townships, because some townships don't have a lot of funding put towards them. Uh, some of our townships foster and, uh, lacking. They don't have a lot of funding. But some of those areas, they could do a little bit better. Um, if they had a little bit more funding to put towards it, it would be easier for them to go, okay, let's do that. There is several pocketed areas where there's nothing. Uh, and those are the areas that are my biggest concern. So I would like to get an agenda with you guys to actually have further discussion if it's something you guys are interested in. Uh, I would love to have an actual presentation for you guys and have an actual discussion, uh, because I'm sure you guys have a lot of questions. And I, like I said, I've been diligent to work hard to get the answers that you guys need. Uh, I've worked with a lot of people and a lot of townships. I'm in Ross Common Township and, uh, our county now. I'm, uh, in Oskota, been working with folks here. Churchill's one of them. Uh, and townships I've been working with, um, again, several townships that we've been working with.
Thank you. So we'll put you, do you wanna be on a committee of the whole, like, in the next, what, time period?
Time you guys feel that you have the time. I know you guys have a lot of.
So why don't you communicate with Tim and, um, there, I did reach out to him this past week because some of my townships had some questions on, on those monies and, and he sent me some emails. So I'm, I'm planning on forwarding those, forwarding those to them. So a lot of them have questions on how they, what they kinda can't do with those. Yes. Thank you. How about comment? Come on up. State your name, where you're from.
Emily Leivo, I live in Prescott.
Can you just say that, spell it for me?
Emily, L E I V O, I live in Prescott.
Go ahead.
Um, addressing the board regarding a situation involving, uh, the sheriff's posse, Sheriff Gilbert and my children. Um, I previously sent a letter to Administrator Dolan Hany, Jane David, and others regarding an incident, uh, in, uh, August. And I have another one to address the board now as well. Right, um, and now you're all aware of the events regarding my children. There's no contact set forth by Judge Delwan School, Craft County, and the issue of the fairgrounds. On October eighth was homecoming night at Old West Prescott High School. My daughter, Krina Harper, is in eighth grade, spent the afternoon loading her class load. She was planning to be part of a group bringing the flow out during halftime. I arrived at the school at six-thirty PM. I volunteered with the athletic department and located the football team, where I assisted every prevention and triage while Jessica Wilson. There was a delay of game due to the rain and thunder. At six-fifty-eight PM, I was called out at the football field while with coaches, where I received a phone call from my daughter. Krina was upset and stated she's here. I just saw her. She's here, mom. I proceeded to find my daughter, who was still in the parking lot. Krina was with her friend Jessica Tracy. The girls stated they'd been seen by Kenstein Walter Harper, dressed in costume and he smiled and waved at them. Krina was visibly upset and decided to creep her out. I pointed out that Walter Harper was in costume and a raincoat over by the concession stand. I told the girls to stay together and they would go find Mr. Carrera and figure it out. The girls went back to the area where they were working on the flow. I spoke briefly with Joe Murphy, Jessica Russell, and I made way to find Carrera. Jessica was able to locate Mr. Carrera, who at the time was standing here in the concession stand with Walter Harper and Brian Gilbert. All noted that it was highly unusual for the posse to be in the game. The posse had not been at school games in the last couple of years. Mr. Carrera informed me that because Mr. Harper was on the posse, he couldn't make the move, even though he's aware of the no-contact situation. Mr. Carrera did go speak with Brian Gilbert and returned me informing me that he was there because he was invited by the sheriff. As per his conversation, Walter Harper was allowed to be there on the posse as long as he didn't put contact with my children. Krina and I were both very distressed by the situation. We wound up leaving the game before it even started. Krina really wanted to stay and be able to do homecoming with her friends. However, this was not possible as Walter Harper's presence and physical location next to the concession stand and bathrooms would have made it nearly impossible for Krina not to run it. Moreover, his posse had not been present in school games in years, as more evidence of intentional retaliation by Mr. Harper and Mr. Gilbert. As I filed a complaint against the two of them regarding an incident at Ogmao County Fairgrounds on August one first. As well, the sheriff's Gilbert outright refused to look at the court documentation and police report history of the situation on August twenty-third. After making several contacts, I filed a complaint letter involving the same on September twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. The letter went to Ogmao County Under Sheriff Paul Pachet, Detective Dolan Hany, County Administrator, Jane David, Ogmao County Board of Commissioners, the Dallas Schultz, Ogmao County Prosecutor, and Circuit Court Judge Robert Bennett. It is more than coincidental that Mr. Harper and the posse were at the homecoming game. This is intentional retaliation by the same and use of powers of arrest and stalking my children. Walter Harper and Brian Gilbert are both fully aware of the no-contact situation between my children and Walter Harper. This event was a direct retaliation of arrest stalking my children and filing a recent complaint to the county. Neither the posse in general or Walter Harper as an individual have been at Woodmore Prescott, Woodmore Prescott game functions in years. Now, all of a sudden, we had moved, now all of a sudden, since we had to move back. And then I filed a complaint a couple of weeks ago. Walter Harper isn't intentionally invited to perform to posse to be his own homecoming pain. Sheriff Gilbert knows this is an issue and will actively act to induce the situation, and Walter Harper was more than happy to go along with it. I've been told that it is my responsibility to keep my children out of these situations. I agree with that. However, shouldn't two grown men who are knowledgeable about the situation have the same responsibility? I request that Woodmore Prescott schools and more limit the ability of Walter Harper to be able to attend any functions at Woodmore Prescott schools.
You're, I'm very sorry, your three minutes is up. Do you have a copy of that, that you can give to all of us?
I brought one. I didn't bring all of them.
Tim, get us some copies. Sheriff Gilbert, can you respond to this? Can you come up and respond?
I would like to.
Please, up to the podium.
I would like to invite her to my office and have a conversation on this. First of all, I didn't know she moved back in our area. Did not know that type, right? So with that, um, and I, I talked to Tim already about Woodmore Prescott, and we had no clue. I had no clue that her children are going to Woodmore Prescott. I had no clue that she, she even had children, asked me that, that went to that school. I thought it was, oh, I, I don't know. Um, but I did say that I can keep them away from Woodmore Prescott. That's not a problem. I can do that. And quite frankly, um, when Walter, Walter came up to me, it, it was a normal situation, and then he looked up and seen his daughter. And his face dropped. He says, oh my God, my daughter's here. And I says, well, just avoid her. Stay clear. As soon as he found that out, he went into a corner and he wasn't the same. And then he left. He left about halfway to the second quarter, so that can't be here. He left. So that in itself told me that was the first time that he seen that she was there. So with, with, with the letter that she just read about seeing the daughter, I don't know how that would happen prior to him knowing the agreement there. Because when he seen the daughter, he immediately, his demeanor completely changed. And he went home. Took the other posse. So obviously, there's a problem there. I would, I would love to see the, uh, the no-contact order. I've never seen it. I'm gonna invite her to my office. My door is always open. If we'll sit down and have a conversation, I'll work it through this matter.
Well, I, I'm gonna add to that because I did get a letter, like she said, back
Right.
before this incident with Woodmore Prescott. This was from the fairgrounds episode, um, which a lot of us received. She took a lot of time to do, um, uh, a lot of effort went into this. Um, this individual was on the posse previously. He was removed from the posse when these accusations, I don't recall the exact year, were made. Um, my question is, is why, when he was removed from Sheriff Hampton for accusations, very, very, very serious accusations that was made against this man? Why was he brought back on? When these accusations were obviously made and enough was proven to have a no-contact order?
I haven't seen that. If I'd seen that, it probably wouldn't have happened.
She did? It, it, so I'm.
I haven't seen that.
So then I'm gonna ask you, did she, when this incident happened at the Ogmao County Fair, did she attempt to reach out to you to discuss this matter?
And at the time, at the time, I thought she lived in the UP. And this is an open meeting right now. I, I will discuss the matter with her in my office. It will come to a resolution on this whole matter.
But at that time, did you invite her in your office to discuss this?
No, because I thought she was living in the UP. I just recently found out that she was in Prescott. When you, when you received that letter, I read that letter from the under sheriff. So I had no idea that she was even in our, our community. So like I said, this is an open meeting.
It is. You're, you're a hundred percent right on it.
Address the situation in my office privately with her and we'll come to a, a resolution on this matter.
My other question is, is because now you have the final say as far as who's on the posse. I, I totally understand that.
Three posse members right now.
How?
And it looks like it's, the, the way it's looking, it's probably gonna be resolved.
However, we also, being on the insurance committee, this is a huge liability with this individual. Let me finish.
I will.
We have a huge, huge liability, and we did get an email back, which I'm hoping Tim shared with you from Kevin related to this situation as well. So Tim will share that with you.
I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it.
Thank you.
I, this will be resolved.
It should be. Any other public comment? Uh, no, your three minutes, unfortunately. Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item fifteen, closed session. A county attorney Greg Nehan has requested a closed session to review legal manners. That two-six-eight, no other business will be considered after the closed session. Can we have a motion to go into closed session? We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbik to go into closed session. We'll call vote on that. Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott. Mark Serbik.
Yes.
We are gonna go, do you guys need a break for us? Are you guys good or?
I'm good. I'm good.
This with commissioners? Is this, this, okay. Yes.
Isn't that, that directly?
No, I guess.
Make a motion to go back into session at ten-thirty-one AM.
We have a motion to go back into closed session, or back into open session at ten-thirty-one. I'll in favor say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. We are back into the open meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
The support. We have a motion to adjourn at ten-thirty-two. I'll in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.